Good day, good day. What's going on everybody? Peace and blessings to you all. Welcome, welcome, welcome back to my subscribers to Space Invaders TV. Welcome if you're just tapping in or you might have just seen my thumbnail of one of my videos in your your feed on YouTube or whatever and you've just thought to stop and check it out. Welcome, look around if you like some of the content that I may speak on. Feel free to subscribe and share, you know, any other content you like and that goes for for the subscribers I have as well too. Be sure to s- don't just hold on to this information I'm sharing. I'm just, I'm a messenger. I'm just a messenger and I'm bringing you a message. So be sure to share the content. It's free. Costs you nothing. I'm not asking for anything. You know, I just feel the need to share, you know, information. So peace and blessings to all y'all guys out there today. Today is Thursday, October the twenty first, twenty twenty one. Once again, peace and blessings be with you. Hope your week is going well thus far. Hope you're keeping your head above water. And not letting too much shake you, you know, just stay focused, you know, on what your plan is and the plan is, you know. And I wanna say, big up to, uh, big, big shout out to all the teachers around the country. You know, the students, you know. I wanna send a message to the teachers to continue to keep doing what you're doing. If no one else, I thank you. You know, I know that how hard it is. I can ima- I can't say I know I'm not a teacher, you know. But I can imagine, but I do have a child and I, I have to teach her as well. So I'm not certified, you know what I mean, like you guys are, but I know like how trying it can be at times and I always just gotta give big, big, big props and respect to the teachers because it takes a lot to train the mind, especially if you're dealing with the young, the young children and just to get them focused, those guys focused, you know. And just teaching them mind and just trying to get them focused and excited about something, you know. Cause some, sometimes for some children, school is the most exciting place for them, you know, until they find their groove or their niche, you know, or a subject they really like, you know what I'm saying? And big up to the students, you know, you guys continue to keep focused. Drain the teacher's brain. They're there, children. Brain, drain the teacher's brain. Like I tell my daughter every day, don't never feel ashamed to ask a question. The teachers are there for you. They're there for that. So all the children continue to ask questions. Continue to be enthused, get enthused, you know, this is your future. Teachers, they're there to propel you and help you get to the next level. Parents, continue to stay focused and stay involved. Get involved with your child. Studies and what's going on with him. Although I know right now, a lot of parents like we can't go into the schools right now and do our, you know, parental checkups on our, on our children and things of that nature, but you know, the emailing the teachers and things of that nature. Stay in, stay in tune with what's going on. Making sure you, you asking your child, what did you learn today? What, what, what happened today? How you feeling? Do you understand what is being taught to you? You know, I just stay, stay involved, stay on them. We, 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 we can't, we as parents, we just can't, we can't just solely put all the pressure on the teachers. We have to, we, i- 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 it's a village. It's a team. We have to participate. You know that your child is weak in a certain subject or whatever, hey, hey, let's get with the teacher and ask the teacher, you know, hey, what can I do, you know, as a parent? What could we do to, you know, help my child get stronger in this certain subject? I mean, it's, 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 it's all about communication, ladies and gentlemen, you know. Although we know some things may have changed from when we have our children in school now, many things may have changed when we were, I know, I know a lot of things have changed since we were in school. I mean, I've been out of school myself for almost thirty years. So, you know, it's been a lot that changed, you know, education wise. But anyway, moving forward, y'all see what this, what the topic is? We gonna get, we gonna get right to it. I just wanna get some quick updates. Give me a second, folks. Alright, so I still been reaching out to the House Rep Pricey Harris and Senator Gladys Robinson. I've still been trying to reach out to him, been sending emails. I'm trying to get with him. Cause the issue that I was bringing up was talking about the vehicle tax and, you know, feeling like that's being, you know, in, in, in North Carolina being double taxed, double taxation. That's why I felt like it was an issue paying those vehicle taxes. And I wanted to see what could, and how could I bring forth an idea to them? How can I, how can I talk to them about? What can we do to present some type of, of, of bill to legislators to change this thing? You know, to come to, to meet at some, you know, at a happy medium because like you're being taxed this on your vehicle yearly, you know, and I, I just don't feel like it's, 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 it's fair when you're being taxed by the state already, the county you may live in, you, some, some places, you know, that do the taxes in the south, cause like if you seen my video a couple of weeks ago, I talked about it, so I ain't gonna keep rambling on, but I'm still trying to reach out to House Rep Pricey Harris and Senator Gladys Robinson for North Carolina in Greensboro. Alright, and also we gonna talk about Attorney General Merrick Garland. And today he's scheduled to testify in his first oversight hearing with the House Judiciary Committee. Remember, we could go, I spoke about Garrett, Merrick Garland, the US Attorney General Merrick Garland. And, and the controversy that's going on right now with him being involved in pretty, pretty much they're pushing this narrative about parents coming to school boards and, and causing, you know, uproar and fighting and threats and all of that thing. So he gets involved, but it's a reason why he's involved. It's not, he's not involved just because of that said issue. It's a conflict of interest why he's involved. His son-in-law runs the company that distributes the the CRT. So that, that's what's going on right now. And, 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 and I spoke about that a week ago, so you could go back and check that out while I talk about Merrick Garland. I don't wanna harp on it. I don't wanna harp on it cause I already done it, but I'm just giving an update about it. And so today he's gonna testify, you know, in front of the Judiciary House Committee today. And they're gonna, they, 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 they're gonna start pressuring him about a lot of things about that issue. And about Texas abortion ban, voting rights, the border crisis and the January sixth riots. They saying that that all can come up today, you know, because, and you know, the questions are rising like our parents are domestic terrorists, you know. Garland's memo combined two already explosive political issues. I'm reading this from Fox, from Fox News. Garland memo combined two already explosive political issues, domestic terrorism and critical, critical race theory. That's the CRT. And that's what Merrick Garland's son-in-law runs the company that produces the literature for CRT. He's got millions of dollars from schools around the country, his, his son-in-law. So it's like, so, so you understanding why Garland is, is engulfed in this now. That's his son-in-law that's messing with the family's money, you know? So, so they're gonna talk about, they're, they're, they're talking about those things. Let's see here. Garland's memo then used the term domestic terrorist and clarified that spirited debate was not the target of his probe. But many have raised concern about the timing of Garland's memo, which was released just days after the NSBA sent a letter to the Biden administration suggesting that parents may be engaging in domestic terrorism. The letter went on to ask the administration to consider its powers under the Patriot Act, the sweeping surveillance legislation passed in the aftermath of the attacks on nine eleven. And Garland's, Garland's family involvement in the education sector. Shortly after Garland's memo knew service to his son-in-law, Zan Tanner, co-founder and education consultancy that not only pushes CRT-related ideas, but also provides schools to services to school districts across the country. Garland's ties to the company have raised question about how much his family stands to benefit from law enforcement cracking down on school board opposition. So yeah, it's many, it's many things going on and you have so many questions, you know, everybody has their feelings about the CRT on the critical race theory. They raise a question here on Fox web news website. Is, is critical race theory divisive? Does it violate students' and parents' rights? Much of the debate over CRT centers on whether the teaching of racial curricula contravenes American ideas about equality, justice and free speech throughout the country. Lawsuits and protests have emerged alleging that CRT, which seeks to combat racism, is racist in itself. I have my, my, my opinion on it as well. CRT, my thing is this, certain things should not be, we, we should not be questioning children. We should not be trying to divisive behavior, you know, with, 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 with the children, you know. Keep that away from the children. That's, to me, it's like this is adult conversation. We as adults, you know, on this level, when we talking about race and things of that nature, we, we, we haven't, as we haven't sat down at the table and even as adults could even sit down at the table and figure this thing out amongst ourselves and come to some understanding when, when, when it comes to, 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 to racial injustice and things of that nature. Hell, we still waiting on the bill to be passed even by Biden and them protecting the blacks, you know what I mean? From, huh, from all the, the, the police killings and things of that nature, you know, which many of us feel like it is race-driven. So there's many things and I know, and of course, everyone knows by now, you, you guys all know, if you've been following me, it's nothing ignorant and racist about me, you know, cause I'm all for the children. I don't care what color they are, you know. We have to get to a point where we can sit down as adults and figure this thing out. So by, by underhanded and going to the children and pushing something to the children, that, that's not nothing for kids. This is adult conversation that is an adult conversation that needs to be had that hasn't been had. And then you want, and then this is coming into play? This doesn't need to be sent to children? That, them, those questions don't need to be asked to children? You know, what, 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 what's wrong with the sick minds of these individuals? So that's how I feel on that. You know, I, I don't support that critical race theory, you know. Now, if we're not gonna have this conversation and come to understand and have real serious conversations when it comes to race, racial injustice and and who's racist and who's not, you know, that's, hey, to be honest with you, that, I mean, hey, this is America. You know what I'm saying? And we, 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 we can go real deep in knowing like what this country was really built on, you know what I'm saying? And I spoke about it before. But it's, it's to, if someone's race racist, that's their, that's what they choose to be. That's what they choose to be. They have to stand in front of the most high and if they do believe in the higher power, then you're definitely gonna have to stand in front of the most high. You're gonna tell him why you hate his children that he created and he created you and he don't hate you. So you have done this, you will have to explain that in your behavior towards God's children, you know. You'll have to explain that, you know, that's to each his own, but just please keep it over there, you know, that's all I'm saying. I, I come, I, I'm, I'm not a racist bone in my body. I don't, I don't like some, some of my own folks, my own black people for being ignorant. So I'm, don't like another race for just being ignorant and doing and saying ignorant things. I don't, I don't, I don't stand on it, you know, I don't like it, you know. We can, we can agree to disagree, but when you are being and saying ignorant things to people, just, you know, and you, and you're saying things about people that you don't even know and never ever gave a chance. I don't care what race you are. If you're saying ignorant things, if you, if you dislike a, a group of people so much. Let me, let me rewind that back. How can you dislike a group of people so much if you don't even know them? If you haven't ever spent time around them, how can you dislike somebody that you don't even know? We're in the twenty-first century. So how could you dislike a group of people or a race that you don't even know? It's best to say, I don't know about, I don't know about that race. I don't know anything about them, but that's false. Okay, so that, that's all I'm saying. But to each his own, you can dislike and, and, and don't like whatever group that you want, but when you start to add violence to that, then that's where the problem comes in. So as know the CRT, I don't agree with it and definitely not pushing it to the kids, not talking to the kids about that. You know, that definitely, you know, some parents are trying, some parents have, of trying to find ways to even talk to their kids about race, racial injustice and things of that nature. And why one group doesn't like the other and why they say these things about this group. People, families are trying, some families today trying to find ways to speak and, 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 and and talk to their kids about that. We don't need the, the, the school trying to te- teach our children how to maneuver in this world today. Educate them on the world to, today, education-wise. Let's talk about banking. Let's talk about finance. Let's talk about entrepreneurship, owning businesses, real estate. Let's talk about these things, teaching them how to bank, you know what I mean? Teaching them how to maneuver and use this digital space, meeting these children with this standard. Let's talk about those things instead of talking about hatred. Let's, let's spend less time, let's spend, the, 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 the school needs to spend less time on that. You know, what the school needs to do is when you seeing hatred, when you seeing that behavior, have your measures and things in place to address those issues. But we don't need you from parents' point of view. We don't need you speaking on, speaking on that and confusing situations. Let that be a conversation in the household. You know, in the, in the children's household amongst their parents and them, and, and, and let them figure that out. That's not for, that's not a conversation. That's not no questions that need to be posed in school and then you're doing it and then you're not even asking or even finding out have, have the children had this conversation in their household with their parents? It overs, that's, that's overstepping the boundary right there. So yeah, Merrick Garland and his family, you know, they is a, it's, it's a conflict of interest right there. And you know, it, it, it's, it's pretty much just coming up and just making these accusations that parents are really, you know, now, we've seen some things happening across the internet and parents yelling at school board meetings and things of that nature. I'm not saying any of that was right, but this thing about like parents are really threatening. It's like, how you saying that? But Garland, you, 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 you weren't so, you, you weren't so vocal when they were climbing up the freaking building and the state's Capitol, you know, you, and Capitol Hill, you weren't, you, you, you weren't so vocal. Why? You know, so why are you so vocal now? Because your, your son-in-law has received, like they had a document here and I talked about a week ago, your son has, your son-in-law has received twenty-seven million from school systems across the country, across the United States. Yeah, that's big money. So yeah, you're gonna be engulfed in it. So that's what's going on. US Attorney General will be sitting down today in front of the House Judiciary Committee. And he'll be having his first oversight hearing and they're gonna go over everything. And his involvement with this CRT. So it's gonna be interesting to find out, you know, to see where they go with it. So moving on, so we all know what we here for. And I told y'all, if y'all been following me, I've spoken about this. I said, I, I said Contreras was gonna come for more money. I think, I know that, I know Contreras and her and her crew, the board members, Contreras and friends, I know that they know that I've been talking and going at them for months. Okay, and I'm, and I'm starting to believe that they, that they, that they liking me to talk about them, you know, they like when I talk about them. Because they continue to keep doing, they, 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 everything that I say, they, they, they show up. They do. When I tell y'all, I said, she's going to come back. Any chance she gets, she's gonna keep asking for more money. She's gonna keep coming at them for more money. Man, you're not gonna see no work being done? We don't, we don't, we don't have no, like, where, where is the receipts of any work being done? There's no work being done. I already told you about the HVAC system. I spoke to y'all about that two months ago. When I said, yeah, they board member said, yeah, that day last year that they spent, they got a couple of schools HVAC systems fixed or whatever last year. I think they said they spent twenty-five million and then they had like some of the parts for the HVAC systems were back order, you know, this, that and the third. Yeah, but the whole thing is why you, okay, whatever. Why has it taken this long for you to start doing anything? These schools are old. If the school is over twenty years old, that school needs updates. If that school is over twenty, is, is twenty years old and better, that school needs updates. But you got schools that are like fifty plus years old in Guilford County, North Carolina. So, but this is an issue going on around the country. If anyone watching right now, if you just dive into your, 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 your county and, and, and your school board and look around at some things, you're gonna find things, you know? But see, it seems like most, you know, what's really puzzling, it's not puzzling. What's really a shame is like people came to Sharon Contreras' defense and you had people speaking up for her when they claimed these emails were sent, these hateful emails were sent to her and board members, you know. You had parents supposedly coming to her aid and speaking on her behalf. And I'm saying, what are you, what are you people looking at? Obviously, you people are captured by something else because it's, and, and you're captured by maybe you're trying to pose for, you're trying to position yourself for a certain job in the school system or something. Because if I, I've been running down stuff for months and ain't nobody challenged me yet, cause I've done my research. And these folks are running and they been posing and capping for her and, and I'm saying to myself, how are you coming to her defense when these children are left out in the cold, defenseless? They have no, they have no protection in these schools. They have, is, is, is no protection in schools. She's just running a dictatorship over there. She's, she's lying about so many things. And I'm gonna read something real briefly, cause I'm not gonna even stay on this long because I've explained this. And I've told y'all that this was gonna happen, that she was gonna come back and ask for more money. Now, she's asking for one point seven billion dollars. She asking for this to be put on the bond. Set one point seven billion dollars. Okay, let's read this real briefly, y'all. This was from, this was an article from the News and Record. Let's talk about this. Actually, why it's loading up? Actually, I'm just going ahead and right now. So in this article in the News and Record article where they broke the story about them, you know, after they board, during the board meeting that Guilford County Schools had this week, the one point seven billion was brought up. Now, this number has been tossed around a, a lot, but let's be mindful here. In, in this article in News and Record that they put, that, that got posted on October the twentieth and the News and Record on October the twentieth, twenty twenty-one, they spoke only about the three hundred million that Guilford County Schools received, right? They didn't only, Guilford County Schools has been receiving millions, ladies and gentlemen, for the longest. Sharon Contreras and friends have not been spending it. I have, three months ago, I did a, I did a, a show three months ago. I posted it and you could go back and look at my videos and it's titled, Guilford County Schools Receive Two Hundred and Twenty-Nine Million. This is before the three hundred million, okay? Three months ago. So you go back in my feed, go back through my videos and look for the title, Guilford County Schools Receive Two Hundred and Twenty-Nine Million. And look at that video. That was three months ago I did that video before Guilford County received this three hundred million, okay? Be, be, before the two hundred and twenty-nine million, so the two hundred and twenty-nine million, you add ten point one million onto that, okay? And that ten point one million came from the insurance. Remember the tornadoes that came through Greensboro and messed up Peeler and Hampton Elementary, Earwood Monastery? Okay, twenty eighteen Guilford County Schools received ten point one million dollars in insurance. They could have got more money. The reason why they didn't get more money is because of the fact that the schools were old. They said the HVAC systems, the roof, the schools needed maintenance. Those three schools needed maintenance repairs anyway. Guilford County Schools knew this, okay? So that's the reason why they only got the ten point one and they, they got ten point one million for three schools. All of those three schools sit dormant. Recently, I wanna say that was Peeler. Correct me if I'm wrong, ladies and gentlemen, I could be wrong. It is a Peeler Hampton Elementary. I ain't tapped in right now. I'm just going off of my head right now for everything that I do know, okay? Peeler Hampton, one of those schools just a couple of weeks ago had fire. Now, the school was boarded up for every since, you know, the, the tornado. After the tornado, the school was boarded up. I wanna say it was Peeler. It might have been Peeler. The school's been boarded up for months, right, for years, okay, after the tornado, right? All of a sudden, that school has a fire just a couple of weeks ago. It was a fire. Even the fire department said they didn't even know how anyone really got in there. The school was boarded up. They didn't even know how the fire started, okay? They're trying to figure that out. We have yet to hear anything else about it. That was like three weeks ago, okay? That, these schools have been sitting there. You can ride by Earwood Monastery that's in Greensboro right now on Bessemer Avenue, okay? Heading towards Burlington Road, if you don't know, okay? That school's been sitting there, weeds growing up out of the grass, everything. That was a brick school. My daughter went to that school. She was, attended that school during a tornado, okay? So they, she, they've received money for that school. Where is that money at? She hadn't even, they, the Guilford County School hadn't even done anything with that ten million dollars. The ten million dollars was money awarded before she got awarded the two hundred and twenty-nine The ten million dollars was money awarded before she got awarded the two hundred and twenty nine million, okay? Nothing was done with that money. Where is that ten point one million? I've been asking that question for the longest. Okay, then we move on. She gets the two hundred and twenty nine million. That's when I say you could go back into my videos. Go back, three months ago, I did a video. Look for the title Guilford County Schools Receive Two Hundred and Twenty Nine Million and watch that video. I talk about that here. This is why I wanted to start talking, um, um, I don't shoot me, I'm the messenger, okay? I'm just here to bring the message, you know, I'm bringing awareness to a lot of things. I don't only just talk about local, I talk about national and world. Events, okay? But Guilford County School System has been heavy on me and that's been a top topic for me. Because I've started noticing flaws and being that I have a child in a Guilford County School System. I've been taking notice to a lot of things that have caught my eye and I feel like if just if. If more people would just start speaking up, start standing up, start saying things. We have different groups out here that do. But we need more, we need every parent because this got to stop. This it, these, these, they they're asking for this money and in total, okay, I said ten mi- ten point one million. Two hundred and twenty nine, uh, two hundred and twenty nine million, then the three hundred million was late, just recently. Okay, the two hundred and twenty nine million took, I think that was, they might have received that sixty days. They had just granted them that sixty days before the three hundred million, okay? That's a total of five hundred and thirty million dollars. You're asking for one point seven? Spend that money that you have already. That's what I'm saying. Just a couple of weeks ag- just 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 a couple of months ago, the county commissioners. Were talking and again, this was in the Rhino Times and I read that off to you guys, you know? They were asking, the commissioners were asking, hey, we have money on the table for you guys, why are you guys not spending this money? Nobody is coming. We're not just gonna give you, you get work done, you bring receipts, we pay out. That's how we always done. That's what the county said. Okay, that's how they do business. They're asking, they were asking Guilford County Schools, why isn't any work done yet? No one's come to us with receipts saying anything. Guilford County supposedly. Uh, the commissioners or what have you, or Guilford County itself period supposedly had sent. Some investigators or inspectors out or whatever to find out what it really is that Guilford County Schools needed. What 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 is their budget? What do they need? Because they've been asking them for things and haven't been receiving the information back that they need. You know, because they were trying, Guilford County was trying to get understanding from Guilford County Schools, like what what is going on? We got money on the table here. And I'm just speaking in lame terms, okay, but this is what's what what was going on. So I'm trying to understand like. Contreras is going asking for this money, so a lot, some people are with it, some people aren't with it. You got the guy Skip Austin with it, but you know, it's still doubt there with him as well too. I ain't really feeling that cat anyway, but anyway, um, cuz there's a lot of BS, man, with all this stuff, so anyway. So, the other question is, hey, if we give you that one point seven, seven billion. Um, we're gonna have to raise taxes on a on 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 a residence of Guilford County. We don't wanna do that. And yeah, it won't look good right now doing that, you know, in these times, okay? So, they're like, oh, and plus, it might be something the county, something else the county wanna do and we can't give you that one point seven billion, so. You're asking for this money and you're asking for this ask to ask ask to an amount of money. For what? And they're like, hey, we give you that, it's gonna take about twenty years before a lot of this stuff gets done, you know? So you asking for money that some of this work, it's gonna, you asking for this type of money, but it might, the the king again gonna get kicked down the road. Why? Because Sharon Contreras, you're gonna be out of there, either way it go. When your time is up or when a new. When some new board members come in, you're gonna be out of there. I see this really playing out for you, Contreras, the way it went down in Syracuse. Okay, cuz and if you don't know, if you're new to the channel. Yeah, check check, Sharon Contreras in Syracuse, New York, when she was superintendent up there, how she jumped ship. She fled from up there because when the new board members came in, I spoke about that too. So if you knew, like I said, if you're new to the channel, just go on through uh and check out, check out my videos, you know, um, I go in depth. About a lot of things, but um, but I see this playing out the way it played out in Syracuse for her. I I really do. See, cuz I'm I'm seeing how it's going, you know, um, and it's all the game. She's asking for money and trying to make it, but why don't, why aren't you doing and spending the money that you already have? And then with this one point seven billion, she's talking about she wants to build two to three more schools? Oh, you wanna replace Peeler Hampton and Monastery, huh? And that's what you wanna do? Yeah, because you were trying to take out the school for the special needs to the gateway, yeah. You were trying to take out them until those parents put a foot in your ass, Contreras, until they start making noise and they weren't having that. You really tried to take out that school for special needs. You really were trying to, you guys were trying to duck repairs on that school. Shame on you guys, man. That's why I say they the board and Sharon Contreras, they're a joke. And the county needs to take hold and the and all responsible, they'll, everyone response, everyone. Needs to be held accountable for bringing that lady here. Because she's been here and I haven't heard and seen a thing she's done. It's a facade. She looked, she comes and looks good for a camera, for a photo op, but what are you, what are you really doing? We don't see no numbers going up nowhere. We see numbers coming down. We don't see anything. We see, we see s- schools with their pride. And they're doing things in certain schools and they're keeping, you know, and they're trying their best to bring the numbers up cuz that's what. The the teachers are front lining it, you know what I mean? These principals are, some of them are frontline, so they're trying to make their schools a better place. But you, as a superintendent, you're doing nothing. I don't care what nobody say. Because I've been talking about this thing for months and ain't nobody challenged me yet. Nobody's come to me with anything other. I'm not talking about no looks, I'm not talking about no facade, I'm talking about facts. And everything I've said, I've been bringing facts and I have heard no one challenge me. No one has come forth and 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 countered me with anything that that I've been talking about. And what I'm saying is, if enough parents would pay attention to this right here. This lady would be out of there, Contreras would have been out of there. It's super tennis around this country that's been getting walked out. Because parents have been coming to school board members meetings and see that is the fear. Now, parents are going and stepping up and saying things and getting because we have the power, the people have the power. We have to remember that. We have to remember that these board members, all these people, they're there because of the people. Unbeknownst to a lot of us, these people get in there because of us and we don't even know like, you know. We voted for certain things and we seeing certain people name on dockets for things and we've been seeing them for years, so you just thinking, oh, they're doing good. For for your community or something, or you just like, hey, well, I've been seeing her name on the dock for forever, hasn't guess she could stay in there another. You know what I mean? So we're just like. Blindly doing this stuff and these people are in there, but we're looking for change in our communities and we're not seeing it because we keep putting these people in there. And these people sitting there on our dime and now they're playing around with our kids. I don't know about some of you folks, I don't like nobody playing with my child. And I'm gonna stand up for my child, you know, because as adults, that's what we supposed to do, stand in front of these children, get in front of these children. And not let these folks come in here, you know? When I, and and everything that's going on now, when you if you go back and you see when I speak about Sharon Contreras and the Broad Academy. Go back, if you're new to the channel, or even if you've been on here on the channel and you missed that, go back, look in, look into my. Uh, videos when I talk about the Broad Academy, Sharon Contreras, and then you'll see, I don't wanna dive all into that right now. And 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 get lost into that because it's a lot and it's factual. I read facts, anything I bring to you, ladies and gentlemen, I make sure I bring it from black and white. And I make sure that it, you know, it's factual. If not, I'm not gonna bring it to you. You know, I can hear, just because some is in black and white in one place, I gotta make sure I'm seeing it in multiple places. I gotta make sure that it's adding up before I bring it to you, you know? And that's what I'm here for. This is Space Invaders TV, this is each one teach one. And we got a lot of people that stand on and sit on boards in this community and they're not doing nothing, ladies and gentlemen. You know, from city councils to everything, not they playing games out here. And my thing is, I'm a messenger, so I don't need to go, you know, my thing is, I've been questioned and I've had emails sent to me about. Me being on the board. I have no desire. Because my thing is this, ladies and gentlemen, they give a clan concise. I I feel better speaking from here. So if you, if you want to be on a board, school board. If you know somebody that wants to be on the school board, I feel you tell them, come watch my videos. If they're willing to do good for the children, come watch my videos and get some knowledge here cuz I'm the messenger and I can help you to. You know, navigate that a little, a little bit. But me, myself personally, nah, I don't, I don't wanna stand next to those folks or stand next to that, like, that whole board has to be wiped out. With the superintendent, it has to be a new trend of thought, like, they they gotta be. Like, the county has to really want fresh-minded people and want, I have to know that they want it internally. You know what I'm saying? We gotta peel back the layers of this thing. So I I'm not gonna stand on the board and I know that I'm gonna be there for for the children. And if I'm gonna continue, my my whole outlook is this, we're there to do a job for the children, we're there to stand up and do what's right for the children. I'm not gonna be sitting on a board going back and forth with people about something that needs to be done for the children that makes sense. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not going to uh. Dump down anything. We, I'm not gonna play the political, don't know po- political game because that's where education. Public education has come to, a political game. As you see Merrick Garland, the U S uh Attorney General. Zan Tanner, his his son-in-law, who hell presents and sells the CRT. Critical Race Theory uh literature to the schools, he's already made twenty seven million. Off of the schools around the United States and county. It's become a political game and my thing is, I'd rather speak from the outside. And then, and 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 give knowledge to those who and 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 I I, I'll be the shark in the tank. I'll be the shark in the ocean and I'll be getting the, and I'll be bringing it back for you. You get the information, you for me, you see, you know? And then you go, if that's what you want, but my thing is, I can't be a part of nothing if I can't make a change. If I'm not gonna be allowed to make a change. You see, you you, your intentions can be good, you can want to make a change, but if you're not gonna be allowed to make the change, that's the difference. And then, that's the, tha- that's the difference maker right there, because if you want to make a change. And then they're not allowing you, but you keep sitting there, then you look bad in the community's eyes. You look bad in somebody's eyes like myself and others and other groups out here. That 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 advocate for the children and education, you look bad in our eyes. It's best that you. If people have good intentions and they walk away. You can't get mad, all you can say is, wow, we losing a lot of people. Why are we loo- now the question is, well, why are we losing these people? Now we go deeper and and pull back the layers. Because now we know, okay, we, somebody had intentions here, but they left because they're not going to sacrifice. Their their morals and their ethics, they're not gonna, they they're not gonna do it. But you have these folks, my thing is you have someone like Sharon Contreras sitting on the board, I mean, sitting there, she's a secretary of the board. But she's running them, never seen an employee, a employee run the employer. I'm said that a thousand palms, a thousand times, and you got. You got these people and it's like, alright Sharon, if you can't do your job, Miss Contreras, then step the freak down. If you're not allowed to do your job, if you, if you, if you had intentions on doing a good job and you come in and you see that they're they're not gonna. Step down. This is a sensitive thing right here. You're playing with children's lives and situation. If you're not planning to do, if they're not gonna let you, then step down. But the thing is, Sharon Contreras has, huh, she comes from the school of the Broad Academy. So if you do the eh, if you do the knowledge on the Broad Academy, you could just look that up, the Broad Academy. Then you'll understand, and she is alumni of the Broad Academy, so their whole mission is never to do for the children. The Broad Academy's whole mission is to is is to be divisive, okay? They weren't even, that 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 academy wasn't even certified. Now they inserted themselves in the in the in the in the Yale School of Business. Or whatever, and, you know, they inserted themselves into that school there, so. They try to get their accreditation or some type of certification up through that. They try to latch on to other, they try to latch on to other. Universities or schools to carry them, you know? But only thing they are is about divisive and they're and 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 it's all about, it's it's politics. At the end of the day, and pushing narratives. What we're seeing today is all part of a broad academy scheme. So if you do the knowledge on that, I've given up the knowledge on that. I've I've ran that down here on my channel. I, it's well documented, it's here. I ain't talk, I don't come and I don't talk. Uh, uh, theories, none of that, I talk facts. As I said before, I don't. I don't, I don't knock anybody that comes with those theories and all of that stuff. I don't knock them, that's just not my, that's not my highway, you know? I like to get to facts, what's in black and white, what's truth, you know? Cuz sometimes the theories, they sometimes they seem to line up what was fact. But it's not that, because once you peel back, you know? It's all becomes the, to me, sometimes theories can be a facade of something. It's not really what it seems to be, it just may, it's just sometimes seems to line up, but it don't quite line up. You know, so. It's like a field goal. It's going and then it just veers, it just veers off. And I think go straight through the goalpost. It might veer off a little bit and they look like it's going and then it just. Off to the left or the right, so that's my thing, I just straight shooter, that's what I'm about. And so, um, yeah, that's what's going on, ladies and gentlemen. Let's not forget, they only talk about that three hundred million. But like I said, you could go back in my videos, three months ago I did a video, you can look for the title in my, in my, in my feed, just go down my, my video line. My my timeline of videos here on YouTube, on my page, on my channel here. And look for the title Guilford County Schools Receive Two Hundred and Twenty Nine Million. That was three months ago that video was posted, okay? When I, when I've said that, that money, that was granted, awarded to Guilford County Schools. That that week that I did that video, three months ago. Then you had, so then you had two months, three months afterwards, that they received. They were granted three hundred million. So, and then let's would not fo- let's not forget, before the two hundred and twenty nine million, it was ten point one million that was. Awarded to Guilford County Schools for the damages caused from the tornado. That came through and 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 damaged a lot of people's properties, homes and things of that nature and and you had three. Of the schools that were, you had a few schools that were really hit, you had other schools that were, that got a little damage, but. These three schools, Peeler Hampton and Earlman and Suri, here in girl, Greensboro, Guilford County, they were at the worst, saying. To my, my my understanding, like I said, my daughter went to Earlman and Suri. Earlman weren't so bad really what it was, they had, they they roof was already, from what the insurance said. The roof was already damaged a little bit, so they had more damage to their roof caused from the tornado. And then they already had, um, then they had like, uh, I think, uh. Yeah, it was water inside of the building and I wanna say, it was water mainly in their cafeteria. And then in that hallway, somewhere in the hallway, and uh, so it was like mold, they wanted to make sure of that. So, but they never took care of that issue. The school just sat there. So, but they never took care of that issue. The school just sat there. School still sits there. To this day, you know, and, but like I said. This Sharon Contreras, this all Broad Academy thing, they wanna, they like to shut down schools. They wanna put in certain principals and people, they move. They move principals and things around. They move people around. Sometimes you wonder, why did that principal leave and why that? Because this is all a broad academy. They they do this. Cuz if there are people, if there are people that come in there and not down with the plan and they their Broad Academy focus is. Superintendents and principals. That's their focus. They want them and their whole trend of thought is not running it like the education. They wanna run the education system like. They the management, they call superintendents like managers and principals like managers. They don't look at it like they 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 don't, the whole trend of thought is 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 bizarre. You know, and it's coming from someone, it's coming from Broad Academy, it was created by a gentleman that just was a wealthy guy. And it's all about political, pushing the political agendas, man. So look into that. Um, I talked about it, you can go on my news, down my feed, my timeline and my videos here, you will see what I'm talking about. Um, but I don't wanna continue on and sound like I'm rambling, ladies and gentlemen. But I just wanted to dive in and let you know about that. Don't be blinded just by that three hundred million. It was, it's Guilford County Schools has already received five hundred and thirty million dollars. We just wanna know where the where the spending at. She wants to up budgets on this and cancel budgets on that, but she hasn't, where did you spending the money at? That's the thing. We have yet to hear. We we hear when she's going and wanting money, but we're not hearing when anything's getting done with the money. That's all we saying, you know, that's all we saying. The same way we can hear about her asking for money, why haven't we heard about anything getting fixed? Okay, alright, we already know things. I already talked about things weren't getting fixed to county. The commissioners to county already talked about when he gave up the three, the three hundred million before that, they said, hey, uh. We, part of the deal when we gave you twenty five million, when we granted you the twenty five million for the HVAC systems and things. Part of the deal was you to keep the maintenance crews working throughout the pandemic in the Guilford County Schools. You didn't do that. So how anything get fixed if she never had, if the maintenance crews were home? You didn't have any maintenance people working in the schools throughout the pandemic. You see, and these are things that I've talked about and I said, if during the pandemic, everybody went home and sat on their hands. I'm not talking about the teachers, I'm talking about the people that like her and the board members. They went and sat on their hands. Everybody waited and sat on their hands and they sat in front of TV waiting and seeing what. What the government, the money was gonna come to their states and then they sat there and they prayed on that money. And they and and they sat there and they waited cuz every chance that she gets, she's going for money. Spend the money first that you already had, then go. You have to, if somebody's gonna invest and give up money, you know, you have to show some type of. You have to take a step forward, move towards getting something done, then go and ask for more money. And see, the other plan is, the other plan they wanted to have was, well, that won't look good if we put it on the bond asking for one point seven. Billion, that might scare the people, so we might need to do it in increments, you know, eh, you know, every year come back. No. Start with that five hundred and thirty million dollars. That's where you start from. Then you go next year and talk about maybe going for another. Uh, seven hundred million or something like that, you know? Try that. Try spending what you got first. Use what you got to get what you want. Use the money you got. Show that you're getting some work fixed, Sharon and friends, Sharon Contreras and friends. Spend the money you got. Start getting to work. Stop asking for money and putting out numbers that are seemingly like the one point seven billion. She says, oh, that's the money that's, you know, that's the number that's always been coming up, so we just chose to ask for that money because that's, yeah, that's the total. Nobody's gonna give you, you how many, how many schools you got? A hundred and twenty six school? Listen, it's gonna take forever. You have, you you have to do that thing in spells. You have to do that thing in blocks. All that work's not gonna get done at one time. And everybody, and that's what ones, that's what they've been talking about. It's not gonna get done at one time, so start. Start with what you got. That's all I'm saying. But ladies and gentlemen, let's not be blinded, let's stay focused. Peace and blessings to you all. I hope you have a great, great rest of the week. Um, I'm your guy Rashawn. This is Space Invaders TV. Um, until next time, I'm gone. Later.